Ahead of time, the microphones don't pick up any, anything you say unless you speak right into them. If you're going to walk over to the plan or discuss things with a second person, you must both use the microphone. So, having said that, let's open the meeting. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, May 24th, 2018, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Comcast Systems, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 14th day of May, 2018. Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Quinn. Mr. Stankewitz.
Here.
Mr. Texorni.
Here.
Mrs. Allman.
Here.
Mr. Williamson.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Here.
Ms. Sax. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to begin with an announcement. We had originally expected to hear the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan on June 7th, and there has been a change in that. Judge Jacobson has revised the court hearing schedule concerning affordable housing to permit court-ordered mediation. As a result, the June 7th, 2018 Planning Board hearing on the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan has been canceled. The judge is expected to issue a new scheduling order on June 14th, 2018. The municipality will provide a revised schedule at that time. Everyone, okay. And let's move on to the findings of fact. Start with the Somerset Tire Service. Any additions, corrections, amendations, anyone? We were all sent a second sheet that had the vote on it. The names of those who voted were left off. I expect Ms. Cutroneo is going to set me right if I ask. See, the people who voted against the motion to deny were myself, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Stankewitz, Mr. Texorni, and Mr. -- Ms. Allman. So those are the people who are eligible to vote. Okay, it's not too much more I can do. So if one of you would like to make a motion?
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
All those against.
I understand that the second findings of fact, which was Nelson Spring, has been withdrawn for corrections and changes, so we won't be doing that tonight. But you did have two sets of minutes as well. The first one was the regular meeting of December 14th, 2017. There any additions, corrections, anybody? No one?
I move approval. Gail Allman.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. The second one is the regular meeting of May 3rd of this year, and again, it's a very short meeting, one sheet. Anybody additions, corrections? Anybody? No? So could I have a motion on that?
I move approval.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie. All right. That brings us to the hearing for tonight, which is the Princeton Charter School. This is a reasonableness review, Section 31 review in response to Condition 13.3 of the 2017 resolution. The site is 575 Ewing Street, Lot 5501, lots 1 and 2.
And Madam Chair, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. So our normal practice is to have the person who wrote the planner's memorandum give a brief overview of what we're doing tonight and what's included in the plans, and so I'm going to ask Dan Dovomilsky, who's doing that for us tonight, if he'll give us a very brief summary of his memo. Dan?
Thank you. Okay, there you go. Okay. Thank you.
Dan?
Yes?
Although this is a courtesy review and a reasonableness review, it's also a review to see whether conditions that were previously imposed upon the Charter School as part of a formal application and a formal hearing have been satisfied. Given that, I think it's appropriate to treat this, that aspect of it as a formal hearing, so I want to swear you in as well as all the other witnesses. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. Okay, well, what I was going to do, if it's, and you just direct me if you want me to do differently, I was going to kind of do a quick overview of where we're at, starting with actually using the engineer and zoning officer's report as the start, and then get into my report to follow. So that's what I'll, the process, so if you need to follow. So the Planning Board, the Charter School was giving, initially started at 1997, and then received approval to construct some buildings in 2001. In 2007, this planning board granted an approval for much of what is existing, including with an enrollment of 348 students in 2010. The site currently has four structures on 6.7 acres. The facility is a K-8 of school. There are play areas along Ewing Street and the, between the upper and lower schools. The primary entrance to the school is along Bun Drive, which is to the lower portion on this drawing with Harrison Street and Ewing on this edge over here on this plan. The 2007 master plan, which this board reviewed, envisioned several improvements, including the construction of a one-story, 17,000-square-foot building along the northern property line, which would contain a gymnasium, art and music classrooms, and theater space; construction of eight parking spaces north of the building; construction of emergency access connecting the parking at Lake View House, LeVake House, excuse me, to the parking at the gymnasium; and provide emergency access from Ewing and Bun Drive. It also relocated some parking, created a bump out, a small bump out in one of the buildings; renovate portions of the upper school and expand the lunchroom; was proposed to construct a basketball court; construct underground detention basin in the facility, facility in the play area; provide landscape and pedestrian improvements; it also included a 20-by-70-foot future addition for classrooms, I think maybe in two of those, or no, a 40-by-70-foot, also a 40-by-70-foot future classroom; and some, a few additional parking spaces. The only improvements from that 2007 review and approval that were constructed was the 17,000-square-foot gymnasium. In February of 2017, the applicant received approval from the Commissioner of New Jersey Department of Education to expand their enrollment by additional 76 students to a total of 424. That would start in September of this past year by increasing 54 students and then an additional 22 students in 2018. Last year in July, this board also reviewed two temporary trailers that I believe were installed or put in place. Currently before you tonight is a proposal to add nine new classrooms, which are shown here in this kind of olive-green color through the middle of the site.
Dan, just for the record, is that a Planning Board exhibit or is that one of the applicant's exhibits?
This is the applicant's exhibit. This is the site plan. Doesn't have a sheet number. It does have a date of 5/24/2018.
Mr. Scott, will that be your first exhibit?
Most likely.
Well, let's, let's mark that as Exhibit A1, and the record will show that this is the plan that Dan is referring to.
My way of correction is forming questions. I apologize for that. That's correct. So in addition, the parking lot will be reconfigured. The parking lot along Bun Drive will be reconfigured to create a bus drop-off. It'll be eliminating the access point that currently occurs in the middle of the parking lot along Bun Drive. The egress will remain, and they will instead use the northern access drive off of Bun Drive. The basketball court is now proposed down in this location, and there also would be two, looks, there's plan shows one, at one point there was two small amphitheaters. There's a bit of a play area for the kindergarten over in this location here, closer to North Harrison, and then some playground areas and rain gardens to be located between the parking and the new classrooms. They're also showing the underground stormwater management improvements on the plan. So that's a summary of the history and the proposal. If you'd like, I can now go through my report to the board, if that's the direction you want to go.
Board? Anyone? I think, I think so.
All right, I submitted a report May 10th, 2018, and the discussion, as we said, this is a review for site plan exemption, reasonableness review, and master plan consistency review. So regarding the master plan, the master plan reexamination report from this board occurred in November 2017. It includes several findings and recommendations that are relevant to this proposal. The first one, the Princeton schools are increasing in enrollment. The Planning Board, it stated that the Planning Board should work with the Princeton school system on identifying suitable areas to expand to meet the growing school enrollment. So based upon that, this board would be considering how the expansion approval for this charter school will impact the need for expanded education in the community, and how the availability of these facilities, not only for the school but potentially for other uses in the community, will impact the expansion in the community. The second was talking about educational institutions in the community, and that the board talked about ensuring that when improvements are made at these institutions, they're made at an appropriate scale and will continue to be, that this would continue to be a major objective of the community. So one of the things as you're looking at this, you should be examining to determine if you feel that the scale of this proposal is consistent with the community and the neighborhood. Along the same lines, the Princeton, it was a statement that Princeton has made significant strides in improving and making the community more pedestrian bicycle safe, and that there should, there were creating good opportunities for circulation and movements to schools and workplaces. So bicycle and walking access to this school should be carefully considered by the board, and how the existing infrastructure benefit, you know, supports that, or if there are things that could be done here to help improve the circulation to and from the school. Another point made in the reexamination study was that a sustainability policy to promote energy efficiency through building design would be a new focus for both the community and the school board. The board should discuss with the applicant the possibility of any sustainable design principles and elements that will be incorporated into the design of this facility. Going back to the master plan, the master plan was adopted in 2009 by this board, and the land use element is an element of the master plan. The land use element had several relevant objectives and findings and recommendations regarding the expansion of educational institutions, and I'll go through a little bit of that. One point is talking about that the functional and growth requirements of institutions must be balanced with residential character of the community. So the board should be looking to consider how any potential impacts of this proposal, proposed expansion upon residential uses nearby, and how to mitigate those impacts. Another point made in the master plan land use element was that an area of focus should be how well the community zoning provides an appropriate transition between established neighborhoods and educational uses. The school is located on primary roads with mostly commercial uses adjacent and one residential home abutting the property up in this location there to the north. The potential impact of this expansion upon the residents and the potential for neighborhood traffic congestion should be considered, along with efforts to mitigate those impacts. More specifically, can the school offer an update regarding previously noted difficulties regarding bus transportation timing, and could the school review policies and/or experience with organized bicycle or walk-to-school programs? Is a question that I think would be relevant to ask. Another point in the land use element was that the challenge of global warming and conversion to non-fossil fuel alternatives requires a shared response of sustainability initiatives by the community. So the board may wish to elicit testimony regarding the design of the proposed expansion in terms of passive solar design, as well as potential incorporation now or in the future of non-fossil fuel alternatives, PV, solar, or even geothermal. Another element of the master plan is an element called the community facilities element. In the community facilities element, there's a couple of additional points that are relevant to this discussion this evening. One is provide adequate municipal educational and cultural facilities to meet the needs of Princeton future, meet the needs of Princeton residents. The second was balance the provision of community facilities against the goals and policies of other elements of the community master plan, and ensure that facilities enhance the quality of life within the Princeton community. So the 2007 Charter School application, which introduced the potential future expansion that is basically subject of this application, was found to be consistent with the master plan goals at that time by the Planning Board. However, the Planning Board did impose conditions, some of which will also relate to the reasonableness review of this application. More specifically, the proposed stormwater management plan was to be modified to comply with the recommendation of the Township's consultant on stormwater. The emergency drive will have, this is what it states, "The emergency drive will have gates at either end to limit access. This drive will not be used during evening hours, and therefore no additional lighting is needed." Another condition was a sidewalk from LeVake House to the other campus buildings would be provided. Condition D was chiller equipment is proposed near the northeast corner of the new building, and a six-foot-high wooden picket fence will enclose the structure. E was two new fire hydrants will be placed within 50 feet of the two fire department connections for the school. F was the proposed lights will be on timers. G was the school will not be required to extend the sidewalk along the entire frontage of Bun Drive. It was also the applicant agreed to plan some additional screening for the neighboring lot number three, which has occurred up in the north there. The board should ask for some testimony regarding the status of some of the improvements and the state of the condition of some of these improvements. It appears that some of the elements were not implemented and may have subsequently been removed or modified. Getting into the reasonableness review, the board is guided by case law to make a determination as to whether the applicant's exemption from the site plan approval is being implemented in a reasonable fashion. The following site and landscape design observations and recommendations regarding the present application are offered for consideration in this regard. This proposal includes the elimination of the Bun Drive access point, as we talked about, or I mentioned before. These, that modification presents a couple potential concerns. First, it's not clear if this driveway is sufficiently wired or has a, has an appropriate geometry to allow for easy bus access, turning, or service vehicles, and since it's going to be the primary entrance, then need to look at whether the radii work or whether needs to be some modifications of that intersection. Second, the stone access drive that occurs between Bun and Ewing Street goes through what's the Maintenance and Refuge Yard, which is located right in this area here, and is directly aligned with this new, so the new, the new use or the concentrated or focused use of this entrance drive now placed the main, the particular entrance off of Bun right at the service area, which isn't the most aesthetically pleasing location to enter a site or the facility. It also kind of, the existing geometry of that entrance makes it so that motorists entering kind of are pointed in a direction to go in straight down the stone access drive and not into the main parking lot. So there was discussion of the potential to look at, when you're looking at the geometry of this, whether this entrance drive could be reconfigured to bend towards the parking along the front of the facility and make it so that the motorist is directed in that area with the service drive being a T into that rather than the straight-ahead focus into it, so that it really focuses most people into the area in front of the school where you want to go, rather than focus them into the service drive. Noted in the original conditions, it talked about the idea of gating and not lighting that entrance drive. There are no gates on that entrance drive. I'm not sure when that changed or how that changed, but there are no gates on that service drive at this time. They are proposing some improvements to the service drive. They are proposing to pave the area off Ewing Street and then pave kind of a tab going in, in this location, and they're also installing some bumper blocks and things of that sort to kind of define or refine the location of the parking. So they are making some improvements to that. They are not eliminating it. I also talk about the idea that regardless of whether you modify that drive or not, there definitely seems to be a need to do something to improve the screening and landscaping around the maintenance yard, so that that is kind of, they've written out a dumpster and some other elements. It'd be nice to really hide that a little bit better, particularly since it's going to be right at the new entrance to the school, or the focused entrance on the school. That entrance does exist. Also discussed the idea that there needs to be a crosswalk for the sidewalk added at the Ewing Street entrance point. Getting into a brief discussion of the parking lot, the parking lot, they will be adding a few parking stalls where the entrance drive on Bun, the center entrance drive will be removed, and they're also proposing to convert the drop-off area to add a little bit of pavement and make it a more formal bus drop-off area that allows some through circulation. The result of that will be that there'll be a couple areas where there will be parking stalls, continuous parking stalls that exceed 20 stalls in a row without an island, which your code would typically require that the maximum would be 20 stalls before an island with a tree and/or a grant covered is introduced. Now, they're not significant differences. I think the biggest one is 29 stalls, so it's not a huge difference, but that it's relative to your code and what typically is developed in the community, it's slightly different. I did note that there, the code would require that there be 34 shade trees for a parking lot of that size, and they currently have 29 shade trees in that area. They were, the proposal modifications would result in the removal of a couple trees, and I think from some discussions with the applicant's engineer, they were talking about trying to put those trees back so that they would come into compliance with that. Overall, these proposals result in the removal of 12 trees and the proposed planting of I've raised a concern or a question really about the new buildings connecting, the new buildings proposal will connect the two, two existing buildings and basically become a wall between the two sides of the campus, and there was just a question as to whether the, this new building would have some level of transparency where during the day, or at least during the school day, people could walk through that building and get from one side to the other and not make it so you have to walk all the way around the campus. And I think you'll find the answer to that is yes, it will be open, but allow them to make that presentation. There was also discussion about bicycle access to the campus and bicycle parking. I believe there are some bicycle parking areas, and hopefully the applicant can show you where they're at on the site. There, the, I had some concerns about the basketball court and the location of the fence. It would have a black vinyl chain-link fence around that. Concerned that that is actually set off from the court sufficiently to make it safe, and that all the components are black vinyl, not just the fabric, so that looks really good. I did note that there were new LED lights, luminaires proposed for the parking lot, but I was concerned that they were proposing a lot of those lights would be on two-foot concrete footings, and based upon the placement of those lights, they're not necessary to have those two-foot concrete footings, so suggested that they could be pushed down into the ground, so there's only, the footing would only be a few inches above the ground. I did also indicate that the buildings appear to be relatively low in stature and in scale with the existing buildings in the neighborhood. The building materials and HVAC units for the new buildings should be described, and the potential for any, for, or need for mitigation of any glare noise or the generation of any other nuisances related to this building construction should be discussed. Finally, there was a quest, a discussion about the playground. A new playground and recreation elements, mostly in the area near to Bun Drive, that could be very appealing. However, they are proposing rain gardens all around those play areas, and I raised some concern about the, rain gardens are a very beneficial and desirable thing, but having them in close proximity to playgrounds, you really, you got to be careful. You got to make sure that the people that are using those playgrounds understand what they are and respect them. And it's also an opportunity. It's really an opportunity to have as an educational element in the school, in which case it might develop that respect. So it was a question if they've really thought that through and if that's what they intend to do. And if not, or even to what degree, do they need to talk about some separation, some physical separation along the edges of the rain gardens so that they don't have problems related to that. I think also they, recently this week, they submitted a plan that shows some, the proposed phasing, that some of these improvements were going in different phases, so I'll leave that for the applicant to discuss that, but there is some thought that some of these elements will be phased. of these elements will be phased. It seems to me that one of the most important things that we're looking for is that the stormwater improvements will be implemented, that were approved or discussed back in 2007, far back as 2007. And I believe they're working with the town's engineering department and the engineering consultant to do that. And I've been told that it seems like it's, the design is in order and should be functional.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Dan?
Anyone?
No? Okay. Thank you very much. Jerry, could you just swear Derek Bridger and Deanna Stockton in? I'd like to ask them if they have anything they want to add to this.
If you both could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
I do.
Any further comments?
Now, Dan covered everything.
Deanna, anything?
Nope.
All right. Then I think that brings us to the applicant. Mr. Skolnik, if you'd like to introduce your team and tell us what you can tell.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Richard Skolnik, on behalf of the applicant, we thank the board for once again scheduled the special meeting for us. It is appreciated. We did, of course, read all of the review letters quite carefully, and we will be covering all of the issues with our five witnesses tonight. We're going to start with some brief comments from Paul Josephson, the chairman of the Board of Trustees. The next witness will be Larry Patton, the head of the school. The next witness will be our architect, Merrily Meacock. Our civil engineer will follow, Thomas Fick. And then we have a planner, Michael Sullivan, to address the consistency review and the reasonableness review. We've spent a good amount of time organizing our testimony and comments so that we'll be mean and lean. And even though we're not going to go item by item in direct order of your planner's review letter, we will cover just about everything, but it takes a few different witnesses to do that. It's not a linear sort of discussion. So with that...
Madam Chair, can I just interject quickly with the question, and I'm sorry that I didn't ask it further, I mean, earlier, but I would appreciate if counsel could opine a little bit on the question of jurisdiction. One of the things that Mr. Dobremilsky raised early on was the question of how the board should consider how the expansion of the charter school will impact the projected need for school expansion. And that's just such a, well, obviously, large and complicated question, or maybe it's a simple one, I don't know, but I don't think that we have what we would need to even speculate on the answer to that question. So I, I'm just curious about jurisdictional boundaries and that kind of thing, if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, that's a very good question. And in fact, it seems to me that we're really preempted in that regard by the action of the Department of Education. So I don't think that's an area that we should get into. They made a decision in terms of the enrollment expansion, they've approved it, and I think basically pending whatever litigation is outstanding by the Board of Education. I mean, that's the end of that story.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to reiterate what your planner mentioned, we have a reasonableness review, so it's not a variance application, it's not a use variance, it's not a conditional use variance application, it's not even a site plan application that is in front of the board tonight. It's what's called a reasonableness review, and that's a determination of whether the applicant's exemption from site plan approval is being implemented in a reasonable fashion. That's the way a case has stated the review that is in front of the board tonight. So that's one aspect, what we're going to call a reasonableness review. And then we have a master plan consistency review. We don't think it actually applies, and we wrote that to the board last summer, but we're prepared to go forward with that tonight. And what the municipal land use law says about that is that the board has actually a forty-five-day period to offer comments that the applicant must consider. And in actuality, the forty-five-day period expired without any comments from the board. And again, it's really an advisory sort of function. Your counsel described that, I believe, as a courtesy review. And we are here tonight to consider the recommendations. We have incorporated many of them, and we thank the board and its staff for the collaborative effort that it's taken to produce a better plan for the students and for the community. So Chairwoman, with that, we think the scope is fairly narrow, this reasonableness review, and then the master plan consistency review.
And then I take it, Mr. Skolnik, you'll be presenting testimony on the stormwater issues?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. So with that, I'll call Mr. Josephson, chairman of the Board of Trustees.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Could you state your full name and spell your last name, please?
Sure. Paul Josephson. Can you hear me okay?
Not much.
Pardon? Oh. What's your preference? Podium or table? I'll do the podium.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
She reports this.
Okay. So, Paul Josephson, J-O-S-E-P-H-S-O-N. I'm a proud Princeton resident. I've lived in town for ten years now, and I am the board president of Princeton Charter School. First, I'd like to thank the board members and staff of the municipality for their time tonight, accommodating us with this special meeting. We know you have a very busy schedule to begin with. Your special meeting tonight hopefully will allow us to proceed to bidding in short order, and we very much appreciate the accommodation. On before you tonight is the board president of a all-parent Board of Trustees elected by over three hundred Princeton families whose children attend Princeton Charter School. Thousands of Princeton children and families have attended the Charter School since it was founded in nineteen ninety-seven. I wish to remind everybody that despite some controversies that have occurred, PCS families are Princeton families. PCS families are PPS families. Over eighty-five percent of our students go on to become academic and extracurricular leaders at Princeton High School. The success of Princeton Charter alumni are also the success of Princeton High School and the entire Princeton community. The Princeton Charter Board recognizes the great responsibility we bear to make the very best and most efficient use of the public funds that follow students to Princeton Charter School. The defining characteristic of Princeton Charter School and for which we are well-known among Princeton families is our K-8 configuration. Having students on one campus for up to nine years of their lives with a stable faculty and administration who get to know children and their families and really get to know them like family makes a very big difference for many children in our community and is a large part of the attraction of Princeton Charter School. While this seems intuitive, emerging research also tells us that elementary schools with wider grade spans like a K-8 school like the Charter School experience fewer incidents of bullying and the opportunity to provide more individualized teaching strategies because the schools and teachers get to know their students so well and have many years to work with them. So in approaching how to undertake a physical expansion to accommodate the Charter School's enrollment expansion, we in the board of the Charter School have been guided by a few core principles that I think you'll hear in greater detail from our experts tonight. First, our goal was to connect all of the buildings to put all of our K-8 students under one roof. Having a lot of interaction between our youngest and oldest students is a very important feature of the school, something that we take very seriously. It's an integral part of our DNA, as it were, and something that we really hope with your approval tonight to be able to enhance. Second, of course, is a goal of cost-efficient design and construction. We are always looking for the best but most efficient way to improve the school. Third, sustainable design and construction. This project will include rooftop solar, and you'll hear from our experts about the design and how we have charged our professionals that sustainability was a key criteria that we wanted them to bring to the project. Fourth, and we know how important this is, resolving the stormwater concerns once and for all on the site. We've instructed our team to comply fully with the spirit and intent of Princeton's stormwater management rules as well as those of state agencies that have jurisdiction over the site. And last but not least, the desire to create more spaces and opportunities for the entire campus to be a benefit to and used by the entire Princeton community, not just PCS students and families. In particular, in finally building a proper cafeteria after twenty years, it is our hope the community will be able to use this space for meetings and events. We've spent a year since our expansion was approved in March twenty seventeen to develop the design that you're going to see tonight, and we think achieves these goals for our community. We commissioned a Princeton-based firm, KSS, to lead our design effort. KSS, among other things, has a particular specialty in school design. Their partner leading this effort, Merrily Meacock, is a local resident who has, in my view, and I hope you'll share it, has developed a tremendous enhancement for our entire community. Merrily's team has worked closely with the Princeton officials to design a building that provides a great learning environment at the least possible course, cost. Finally, I wish to assure the board that we've heard the message loud and clear the last time we were before you on the trailer application. You wanted a rock-solid approach to stormwater management. As one of the first major projects to come before you under the new rules, we understand the need to deliver on that promise. You have my assurance that in this project, stormwater facilities will be built and they will comply with the plans and comments received from the board's professionals. You have our commitment on this point. Again, I thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
You mentioned something about making sure the facilities are open to the Princeton public at large.
Yes.
If a group or something wants to use, let's say, the cafeteria, what do you envision that procedure to be?
Well, currently, we, the gym building that was built on our last application here in two thousand and seven is a good example. There, simply, community groups are able to call Larry Patton, our head of school, and express an interest in using the facility. We work with several groups, and I believe Mr. Patton will be following me and can lay out further who is currently using the facility and what that process is. But really, it's as simple as picking up the phone and calling Mr. Patton and expressing the interest.
I do commend you for that because I think one of the great things about our town is just having that accessibility and the interactivity between, let's say, the university, the Charter School in this case, and the public.
It's extremely important. We look for every opportunity to be a critical part of this community, to serve the community. I think, again, Mr. Patton will speak to some of this in some greater detail, but we certainly, recently, we've hosted events for the Princeton Girls Lacrosse Club, some of their activities, they wanted to have a party, we opened up the school so folks could be there. More importantly, we have a summer academy that we have for our students that we have discussed and are prepared to open up for other students to attend during the summertime who are not PCS students. So this is a commitment not simply as to the grounds, but actually making the educational institution more closely entwined with the community. We also have a service project going right now in which our eighth, I believe, our eighth grade students are doing tutoring sessions in various community facilities around town to assist younger students with their homework and problems that they're having in school. So these are, these are ways where our involvement in the community really, we hope, goes beyond simply the physical and is really fully embracing. Thanks. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm certainly available further.
Chairwoman, is your practice to have a public with an opportunity to question your witness? Should you save that to the end? Usually save that to a public portion instead of...
Thank you for our next witness.
I've been called a loud talker. I don't know if I need the microphone, but it'll get on the tape.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Get this adjusted. Larry Patton, P-A-T-T-O-N. I'm the head of school at the Princeton Charter School. I'll try to address some of the questions that came up earlier as well, as Mr. Josephson said. First of all, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I'm going to speak a little bit about the building from the standpoint of the impact it will have on our program and some goals that we have for it. Last year, we were approved for seventy-six additional students at Princeton Charter. Fifty-four of those students are here now, so they started last September, and we'll have twenty-two additional students that'll start in the fall. Historically, as a school, we've tried to focus our resources inside the classroom and have had something of a make-do approach to our facilities. For eleven years, we didn't have a gymnasium. Physical education was taught outside regardless of the weather, unless the nurse said that we had to move them inside because it was too cold. We tried to accommodate by having skating trips, bowling trips, different ways around the facility issues. We had art on a cart, art in the cafeteria. We don't have a library, we don't have a media center. We lack sufficient small instructional spaces, and I'll speak more about that. We schedule at about eighty-five or ninety percent of capacity of available classrooms, which is an incredible burden, to make our schedule fit, which is fairly complex. And our cafeteria spaces are too small, the ceilings are too low, they're not really fulfilling our needs. So it's also become increasingly clear that the classroom spaces themselves are a valuable and essential resource in education. And we're looking in the proposal of having a bigger cafeteria space and four new classes to accomplish a lot of needed goals, even though that's a fairly modest build-out. One thing we're going to do is try to move our fourth and fifth grade student classes into those new spaces and have a sort of a symbolic and also a physical transition from lower elementary into the middle school. And there are a great many benefits of being a K through eight school, and we try to organize the connection between the older students, helping the younger students. But they also need to be a little bit separated, if you know, eighth graders and fourth graders, from each other during the day. So we're trying to build that transition in moving the spaces around. I think one of the main things that we'll benefit from by having the fifth grade moving away from the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're going to free up spaces for some of our essential and increasingly necessary programs in special ed classrooms, English as a second language spaces, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We need more versatile, small meeting spaces for those kinds of programs and those needs of learners as that is increasingly more apparent for us. And this is going to enable us to have adequate spaces for that to happen, counseling. There are a number of different things that we really are scrambling and struggling to fulfill, and as we're getting bigger, we need more of that. So we're really excited about having that, not just that transition of spaces, but also having more spaces that will meet some of those, some of those needs. The cafeteria, the other aspect of this is the cafeteria is going to be large enough that we can have two, maybe three sittings for lunch. And that will allow our schedule to have a lot more flexibility. Right now, we have five or six separate kind of lunch services going on, and it puts a huge burden because when they're, if they can't be in lunch here, they, it runs into a... Right now, we have five or six separate kind of lunch services going on, and it puts a huge burden, because when they're, if they can't be in lunch here, it runs into other problems. It's like one of those games, when you move the slide around, it runs into something else, and I don't have a great mind for that. So we're hoping that that will ease some of our space issues and scheduling issues as well. I also think the connector provides a little more containment and safety for our students, because right now, for our program, students go to the gym, art, or music building every day from the lower, the elementary school, and so they're traveling outside to get there, which is great. We do have a somewhat Spartan approach to being outside, but a lot of time putting the coats on, getting back and forth, and just from a containment standpoint, getting to the nurse, getting to those classrooms, it's, I think, I feel a little more comfortable having the ability to be inside for that entire run. In terms of community use, we are open to any organization that, we have an agreement that fulfills certain requirements, but we allow, a local Girl Scout troop uses our facility, and several have over time. We have two local youth basketball groups, a tennis group, two adult badminton groups, and these are usually a blend of some of our students and others who are not our students. There's no requirement that it is our students only. We also, our facilities use by the high school jazz band director for a summer camp at Princeton Charter, Science Seeds Camp, our summer academy, as Paul mentioned. I'm trying to, I've just contacted the Princeton Children's Fund, and we're going to sponsor, we're offering to sponsor 10 seats at our summer academy and camps for free for members of the community who are not Princeton Charter School students, and we're going to, which would represent about 25% of our overall program, and we're going to look to continue to expand that and build on that. And then in some one-offs, where we've been available, the rec department has asked if they could use our space for overflow. We've always been open to that. In simple things like, they had a New York Yankees batting coach in one day, and we, they were able to use our space because they couldn't get anything else in. We've had TEDx talk. Our space is used for the Princeton Festival auditions. McCarter has used our space, the lacrosse breakfast, things like that we're very much open to. We want to be part of the community and have the facility be accessible. They just need to give my office a call, and we arrange that. So I'll stop there. I've been going for a bit. Are there any...
There were some issues raised in the review letters about busing, biking, and walking to school. Can we start by giving the board an update from last summer on where we are with busing, and then we'll take the other subjects as well?
So this is a complex issue. We encourage our students and families to walk or bike to school. We have bike racks, but there are some challenges with that. Primarily, there aren't that many students who live very close to school and can walk there. And while we do have some good crossing lights, Harrison is a busy street, and we have younger children, and parents are not always as comfortable with that. Last summer, we had a meeting. We tried to work through some ideas about how to improve the situation. We talked about additional crossing guards. I know from Officer Murray, who's at the meeting, they have a very hard time finding people to staff the spaces they have now, the crossings that they have now. And so that's not, there seems to be an issue with that. I think that probably the best traction that we, I feel we can get, and we will continue to promote that, and some walking to school, walking buses, getting the parents involved, and we have some parents that are supportive of that. Some have even proposed driving to the shopping center and biking from there, just to promote the understanding of the importance of biking or walking. But I think that busing is probably the avenue that will give us the most traction in this area. So I've been in communication with Steve Cochran and Donna Braden at the high school. We were fully supportive of the change in the start times for the different schools in town, and we were actually hopeful that we were going to be able to start about 15 minutes later or 20 minutes later than we do now, and allow our buses to come later, which would then allow for, I think, more parents opting onto the buses. As I mentioned last summer, our buses come very early, before 7 o'clock for an 8 o'clock start for five- and six-year-olds, since parents really don't avail themselves of that option. So we'd like to promote that. I think that there, that there's a little delay with the start times for the schools this year, and that didn't work out. But I know, I've been continuing to speak with Donna Braden, who's been wonderful, and we're going to try to continue to work on that. We think that the way we might solve that problem is by centralizing our bus routes so that instead of going all around by having a route that comes later but goes right up Harrison, maybe one, some of the other main roads, where parents are walking to the bus stops and getting on there. So it will reduce the number of buses, hopefully, but also make them arrive at a time that's a little bit better. But I think we'll keep working on that and chipping away at that, and I think we've had a very good dialogue with the town and with the PPS to improve that.
Chairwoman, that concludes our testimony with this witness.
Any further questions?
I do have a few. I know that Princeton is preparing a climate action plan, and one of the committees working on it is the resilience committee, and they have talked about, among other things, emergency shelters, et cetera. And I'm wondering whether, I was surprised to learn that none of our public schools have generators, so they can't serve as emergency shelters except in a limited way. So I was wondering whether the school is going to, is planning to have a generator, whether its solar will allow it to be, you know, to have battery backup for power and that kind of thing. Just curious about your thoughts about the school's utility in case of disaster.
Yeah, it's a good question. I know that we looked in the solar at having a battery storage system, and we were specced out for that. They came out and did a visit on-site for that, but I'm not certain if that is something that we'll develop and how that will be used. We've talked about a generator, frankly, mainly from a standpoint of maintaining operation in terms of providing power and access to technology in the event of a power failure, but we haven't really considered it for that purpose. But it's something that's worth considering, so.
Something to think about. I have another question. There's reference, and maybe this is a question for someone later on, but that the school would not be required to have a sidewalk along the entire frontage of Bun Drive, and I'm wondering if that's still the case, and if so, why? Is that...
I don't know if that's technically in my wheelhouse for that.
Hold it for later? Okay.
We're going to try with our civil engineer and whoever has to answer it. Sidewalk on Bun.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Chairwoman. We'll call our next witness, Merrilee Meacock, an architect. And Merrilee, our next exhibit will be A2. When we hand you that.
Is it possible to raise that easel a little bit higher?
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Merrilee Meacock, M-E-A-C-O-C-K.
Thank you.
Can you provide your professional qualifications and your experience in the field of architecture?
Sure. I'm a partner with KSS Architects. I have 28 years of experience as a licensed architect in New Jersey. I've also served on the National Committee for the U.S. Green Building Council Lead for Schools in the creation of that document, so I have a lot of extensive experience in sustainable design. And I also chair my zoning board in Cranberry.
Have you been recognized as an expert in New Jersey in the field of architecture?
Yep. Lots of boards.
Thank you very much. We accept your credentials.
Thanks.
Okay. Merrilee, I'll just ask that you call out the exhibits and then the sheet with the last revision date as you provide your comments.
Okay.
A court reporter could follow along.
Sure. I'm going to stick, I'm going to stick with A1 for now. This was the site plan, just to orient you to the property. On this site plan, Ewing Street is shown at the top of the page. Bun is shown on the bottom of the page, and north is to the right of the page. The center of Princeton would be to the left. And the existing campus consists of a series of buildings, and they're actually, some of them are connected and some of them are not. And so the purpose of this project was to connect all of the school buildings so that they could be completely connected within interior space so that everyone could access the nurse's office and other spaces, other administration spaces within the property. But at the same time, as we were connecting the buildings, we were accommodating the need, as Larry spoke about, the need for additional classroom space and cafeteria space. We did look through the entire campus to see how we could best utilize all the spaces that are already there so that we didn't have to build as big of an addition. And another few, a couple of other things that we were looking at were the quality of the campus itself and how to provide Princeton Charter School with an improved identity because they're such a unique and special school. How could we show that out to the world and to the community at large? And then also allow people to find them, because one of the current problems that they have is they're not sure which door to go in. And so we were trying to create a welcoming entry for the community at large. In addition, they were looking to, again, further their educational mission. Some, Larry spoke about some of those things. We are now moving on to exhibit number A2. This is a ground floor plan, and these were exhibits that were passed out as part of the 11 by 17 exhibits. And on this exhibit, we are showing, in the same orientation as A1, Ewing Street would be to the top of the page, Bun would be to the bottom of the page, and north would be to the right. And on this drawing, we're showing the existing elementary school is on the left, the existing middle school is on the right, there's a gym beyond that, to the right of that building. And then our connection, our building, is literally a corridor that connects the elementary and the middle schools. And on that corridor, we have two fourth-grade classrooms, two fifth-grade classrooms, and a cafeteria. Another 11 by 17 exhibit that was passed out, this is A3. This is a rendering of the front of the building. This would be as if you were looking from Bun Drive, looking at the property. And on this rendering, on the left side is the existing elementary school, which is actually a very, is a really nice building. It has some sloped roofs and some beautiful materials, and it has sort of a nice tucked-in presence about it. On the right, we have their existing middle school, which was built long before this school was created. And then in between, we are creating an addition that actually connects these two buildings. So from a scale and massing standpoint, as per, you know, some of the planner's testimony as well, we are trying to tie the design of the new addition to this low-slung elementary school in terms of the way the sloped roofs and some of the materials, the darker materials that allow it to kind of nestle into the landscape. The site automatically has a bit of a high point on Ewing and then a low point on Bun, and so this addition kind of nestles right into that little hill. And especially, the cafeteria is pushed to the back of the addition so that the cafeteria is actually built right into the hill so that it doesn't have a huge presence to it. The addition is actually one-story. The existing elementary school is two, and the existing middle school is three. So our new addition is only a one-story addition. Another aspect of the property is that it's set quite a bit back from Bun Drive as well as Ewing Street, so it doesn't have, you know, a huge impact on, you know, surrounding neighbors and things like that, because it's kind of nestled into the woods on the Ewing Street side, and it's also nestled into the hill, and it's set back from all roads by quite a distance. Let's see. The building has, we're using cement board siding on the new addition, and then a lot of glass where the corridors are, and the glass would be looking out to the landscape and some of the gardens that we're creating. As part of this design, we're also creating, currently, it's basically a lot of mulch between these two existing buildings, so we're creating a lot of actually new gardens and new green spaces to express sort of the identity of the school in terms of sustainability and also nature, science. There are a lot of really neat programs at this school, and so we're trying to better express what they're doing in the property. As far as sustainability, we, as I mentioned before, we did a holistic view of the entire campus to make sure that we would only need to build as much as we had to to accommodate this addition. So we did look at a lot of possibilities within the existing buildings to reuse spaces, to make spaces more flexible so that they could be used. They're already, you know, the scheduling, as Larry said, it's pretty tight scheduling, but how could we make minor improvements throughout so that they could better use all of the spaces that they have so that we could build a very minimal addition? So that in and of itself is very sustainable. Again, the garden has this sort of theme of, you know, sustainability. There are a lot of bioswales and rain gardens along the front of the property, or actually throughout the property, which express, you know, sort of an interest in sustainability. As Paul mentioned, we're going to have solar panels on the roofs of the addition. We're also putting solar panels on some of the roofs of the existing buildings in order to increase the energy generation on the property. We have, you know, we're gathering materials from local sources, low VOC paints, construction recycling. There are a lot of things that we can do to make the property sustainable. One of the biggest things that we're doing is actually creating a very tight envelope for the property, so increased insulation in the walls and also the roof, and then using a very efficient air handling system, which is actually one of the bigger uses, users of energy when it comes to building construction. How you heat and cool a building is a big user. And so the system that we're using is a very efficient system that accounts for some parts of a building being in full sunlight and other parts of the building being in northern shade. So the building has some variability, the mechanical system has a lot of variability As far as item number seven on the planner's report was a question about how do we, now that the buildings are connected, how do we get across the building to get to the other side of the site? And the other side of the site is a soccer field, and so what's happening is during the day... And so what's happening is during the day, the building is locked. You know, for security reasons, schools have to be locked. But when there are events going on at the school, like a soccer game or things like that, these doors will be open so that people can actually pass right through the building. That would be planned. In terms of HVAC glare, noise, and nuisance, item number 10 in the planner's report, we do have a rooftop air handling system which is nestled between the masses of the existing, or not the existing, the elementary, sorry, nestled between the cafeteria and the new 4th and 5th grade classrooms so that it won't be visible from the road. We do have screening around that as well. We have some small ground-mounted condensing units which will have landscaping around them, but they're very small. As far as generation, there's nothing in this project that will generate any additional noise other than those air handling units, which again are kind of nestled within screens that kind of dampen any noise coming from them. We're not preparing any food on the property. The kitchen that is going to be included in the addition is actually relocated serving, warming kitchen that's coming from the existing middle school. So there won't be any food being cooked on the property. And as far as site-mounted lighting, at each door, by code, we're required to have lighting at each door. And all of the lighting that we're including in order to accommodate the entry lighting has the cutoff so that it doesn't, you know, spill into the sky or into neighbors and things like that. And the last question was about the playground planting. And I think I, you know, I wanted to express, currently, this is an entirely, between the two buildings is a playground. And I think that sort of sends confusing cues as to where you come into the building. And so now the actual front part of the property will be much more about entry into the building, you know, how you get in. We're actually creating a new entry at the middle school. And the, so that it becomes sort of a garden and, you know, a green space where you actually know where you're supposed to enter into the building. We are looking at compartmentalizing parts of play so that students can be kind of housed in different rooms that have, right now, they don't have very many pieces of equipment. And so we're planning a lot of equipment that keeps the kids really active and kind of contained. So that'll be a lot of fun. And that's, I think that covers everything.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
concludes our testimony with this witness.
Right. Are there any questions?
As far as, you mentioned something about confusion about entry into the buildings, et cetera. So have you looked into like signage issues to basically mitigate that issue? You said something about confusion as to where entry places are for the buildings. I'm saying, have you looked into the issue of like signage as a way to mitigate that concern?
Oh, signage of how to get into, where to go? Yeah. We actually are showing two new signs, one at the middle school entry. And we were going to put a sign at the elementary school entry. The elementary school entry is, would be an entry that parents would go to that know where they're going. The middle school entry is the main entry so that people coming to the campus know where to go.
Thanks.
Can I just ask, what the colors of the buildings are shown in this rendering, is that approximately what they're going to be like?
They're a little darker than they really are. We're trying to find something that's more in keeping with, the existing elementary school is like a dark purplish-black brick, and it's really nice. And so we're trying to find colors that kind of, that are harmonized with that. So I think it's...
Interesting problem.
So I was just curious, I mean, you've mentioned a number of kind of sustainability and environmental aspects of the project, but I don't see any mention, maybe I missed it, of lead. Is the building going to be lead or built to lead?
No, we usually run through the lead checklist just to make sure that we can hit as many of those boxes as we can. But we don't actually go through the formal submission to USGBC because there's a lot of expense associated with that. So we try to, we try to make the building as sustainable as we can by going through that checklist.
And so by going through the checklist, would you say that the building would be, what level of lead? Would it be bronze, silver, gold? Would it, or any of those?
I, it would probably be certified.
Okay.
So...
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll call our next witness, Thomas Fick, an expert in the field of civil engineering. While he's getting set up, Mr. Josephson, do you have an answer on the batteries, backup power? While he's getting set up, we're recalling Paul Josephson. Try to answer them.
I can't remember which member, I think it was Ms. Wilson who'd asked the question. Certainly, we're very interested in trying to have emergency generation capacity. And we have asked as part of our solar package that is going out for proposals on battery backup and a battery storage system. I believe we have a $75,000 grant reserved with the BPU towards the cost of that. So that's our hope and expectation that we will be installing that system.
And is that instead of a generator? Does that, will a generator be duplicative? I don't know. The answer to that question.
I can't speak to how much capacity those batteries are going to have and how long that will run us for. I don't know that it would keep us going 24/7 indefinitely.
No, I don't think so.
So you're, so you have no plan, I'm not trying to get you to say you will, I'm just want to clarify. You have no, the school has no plans to put in a generator?
We do not.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, Thomas Fick, F.I.K.
Okay, Mr. Fick, if you could provide your professional qualifications, please, in the field of civil engineering?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional state of New Jersey as well as Pennsylvania. I'm also a certified municipal engineer. I'm also a LEED accredited professional. I've testified in front of the Princeton Planning Board and Zoning Boards in the past as well as other numerous boards. I was licensed in 2005. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Engineering degree from University of Rhode Island.
Thank you very much. We accept your credentials.
We appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Fick.
I'm just going to briefly just go through some of the site improvements that were mentioned earlier this evening. Just clarifying a few things. As mentioned before, we have the proposed addition between the two existing buildings. Some of the site improvements that we're showing here is play areas in the front, player behind K4 building, various pedestrian walkways. We're not proposing any major improvements to the existing parking lots with the exception of the bus drop-off area here. There's currently a bus drop-off area there now, but the intention is to push it back into the sidewalk a little bit. By doing so, creates an additional 22 parking spaces that could be used for special events at any time. But in a primary use, a daily use, that'll be a bus drop-off. One of the things that we propose is eliminating the middle driveway off of Bun Drive. And the reason we did that is that the, for circulation purposes and improving the circulation flow, not only on Bun Drive but also through the parking lots. The, there's a lot of conflicts in this area here. And what that does is that avoids any cars from, you know, reaching a car that wants to make a left turn, going around. And then we also have another, the primary entrance is now going to be on the northern side. So what we did is we cleaned up this a bit so there'd be less of a conflict down at the middle driveway area here.
There was a question about whether there'd be a sidewalk on Bun or not?
Yes. A couple of thoughts on that. Number one is that extend, there's a Bun Drive, there's a walkway already on the east side of Bun Drive. And that goes up to the north of Bun Drive. I think almost up past the development up there and then closer to the park as well. Down at the southern intersection with the, between Harrison and Bun Drive, there's a controlled intersection with crosswalks. It's a safe place to cross. Extending that drive, if we do extend this walkway, you know, there is no walkway currently in place on the west side of Bun Drive. So what that means is that at some point near the northern driveway, we'd have to have a crosswalk. And I see a couple of concerns there. Number one is that this is the primary entrance to the school. There's also an entrance and exit for the business across the street. Also, there's a curve, sort of a curve in this area as well. So extending it and then providing a crosswalk here, I don't think that'll be a very safe condition. I think I'd prefer to have the students cross at the controlled intersection here at this point and then just walk up, you know, walk up the other side of Bun Drive into the north.
There was a comment from the planner about the turning radii on the north of the entrance. Can you talk about that? Are you prepared to provide the turning radii and so forth?
Sure. This has been operating as a primary access drive. This middle driveway actually has been closed off because of the conflicts here. So this has been operating for some time for buses and service vehicles. And there hasn't been any issues with the turning radius here, but we can certainly provide vehicle turning templates to confirm that.
Mr. Dobremilsky had a thought of sort of smoothing it out or changing it a little bit. Do you have an opinion on that technical issue?
Yeah, I do. In regards to the stone drive in the back, this is related to that. The stone drive has been in place for, you know, ever since the gymnasium was constructed. What we've done here is that we've refined it. We've cut out a lot of the unnecessary stone in that area. We've defined the parking spaces back there, which are currently used by staff only. And also the parking in front of the Marseille building here, same thing. We're refining the edges just to make it a cleaner look. When you get down to this area, this is a, it's a pretty wide open area now as it is. And what we intend to do is put a fence around the maintenance yard to clean that up a little bit, to screen the storage of materials and everything in that yard there.
So we're agreeable to those suggestions?
Of course, yes. And then also provide some landscaping for greenery to soften the look. Absolutely, we will provide that around, around the fence in here. So there is a plan to add some greenery in this area here, you know, to soften that approach a bit. But we don't see any reason to change anything here because this driveway is really used for staff and service vehicles only. There hasn't been any increase in public traffic through here, and we don't anticipate being any increase in public traffic through here with this proposal.
So the intent is really just to, for the most part, keep it the same on that north early area there?
That is correct, yes.
Not proposing to make that a thruway or anything?
No, not at all, no.
Stormwater?
Yes, stormwater, okay, big issue. So in, as we know, in 2007, as part of 2007 approval, the detention basin, as part of that application, was not constructed. So the gymnasium was constructed, but those stormwater improvements were not constructed. So when we looked at the site and looked at a way to address stormwater management, we went back to March of 2008 prior to the gymnasium. So what the stormwater design is based on is existing conditions prior to the gymnasium. So we started from a clean slate. We started from scratch. And the detention basins and other related stormwater facilities, they all take into account the gymnasium. So our proposed, our post-development conditions include the gymnasium and all the improvements. And they all are controlled through four underground detention basins in various areas on site. So some of the things we also looked at, which were not part of the 2007 application or the approval, even the design, is that we've incorporated more non-structural green infrastructures. A couple of terms that we can use, green infrastructure, sustainable, low-impact development strategies that were never part of the original 2007 site plan. Some of those things are disconnecting roof runoff. Currently, all the roof runoff essentially goes into the ground directly into the storm sewer system. We're disconnecting all of those roofs, putting them into rain gardens, into swales, increasing time of concentration, slowing down the runoff. Overall, there's a net benefit, a decrease in runoff leaving the site. We have bio-retention swales. We have, we're eliminating a large portion of mulch and replacing it with some grass, a lot of native plantings. We also have a section of porous pavement as well. So we've incorporated a lot of different strategies and put that all together. And the result is a stormwater management design that meets the water, the quantity control, water quality and recharge requirements in the ordinance.
You've had some meetings with the board's professional staff?
Yes, we've had several discussions and meetings with the Princeton engineer as well as the Princeton stormwater consultant, Joe Scoopian. We've had good meetings. We've gone through some technical things. And we have a plan here that meets, that complies with the ordinance. And, you know, going forward, we look forward to working with them to finalize the design.
In fact, there is less area, less paved area on this plan that's devoted to vehicular use than there was previous things?
That's correct. The, one of the things that we, that result in, one of the strategies that we've tried to do is, you know, we try to get rid of as much impervious surfaces on site. So by also refining this driveway back here, we're able to lose almost 1,400 square feet of vehicular, you know, traffic-based pavement or, you know, surfaces that generate pollutants. So we're able to do that, and that helps with water quality, meeting the water quality requirements.
Hey, now, the other day, we submitted a fairly simple phasing plan that showed some options. Will any of those phases impact the stormwater design and initial construction of the stormwater facility?
No, we designed the detention basin taking into account all of the, all the phases, future phases. And it will be constructed per that design.
So basically, the stormwater infrastructure for everything is going in up front?
That is correct.
Could you just briefly touch on lighting?
Oh, sure.
Focusing on the staff comments that come out of the review letter from Mr. West and Mr. Bridger dated May 17?
Sure. Couple of things on the lighting. We are replacing the current lights with LEDs. The LEDs will be full cutoff, to reduce glare, very energy efficient. They'll generally be in this, almost the same locations as the current lighting. The lighting back in, when these parking lots were constructed back in, I think, 1998 maybe, some time ago, were set at a 20-foot mounting height. And we understand that that's, that exceeds the maximum allowable in the ordinance. However, we are going to maintain that 20-foot height because it works very well on this property. We don't see no benefit from doubling or even tripling the amount of lights at a lower height on either side of the parking lot. It would just, it would be additional disturbance, electrical infrastructure and things like that. So, and the primary, you know, the parking lots are, it's a school use. They'll be off on timers. They'll, you know, they have a sufficient amount of coverage. Again, you know, it's not something that you need a very intense lighting there to late hours of the day.
Mr. Dobremilsky had a comment. I hadn't seen it in a review letter, but he made a verbal comment at least about some of the low lights. Do you recall that when he testified?
Oh, the footings, of course, yes. I'm sorry. That detail on our plan was made for... That detail on our plan is made for a parking lot, for light poles that are up against a curbing. But there's no reason to put a two-foot exposure on those footings. So we'll make them flush.
Okay with that? That's that off? Okay. In the review letter from May 17, there's some specific comments about improving the asphalt sidewalk on Bun. That's in bad condition right now. Is the applicant agreeable on that end?
Yes, we-
Just point out where the comment-
Sure, the as, right. The asphalt sidewalk is generally along Ewing Street and into the site and a small portion of Bun, of Bun Drive in this area here. So we'll walk the site, examine it, determine what issues there are, and then report to the Princeton engineer and repair if it's deemed necessary.
There's a suggestion for a crosswalk at the Ewing Street driveway?
Yes, that was accidentally left off our plan. So yes, we will comply with that.
Okay, we talked about landscaping around the maintenance yard at the northeast corner. Could you just point that out again for us, please?
Sure, yeah. We intend, in addition to the fence, and plant some additional vegetative screening to soften that look.
And Mr. Dobremilsky addressed and, I think, suggested some additional plantings along Bun Drive with the tree trees near the parking?
Sure. We, as a result of this driveway being eliminated, we'll plant additional, I believe the deficit was five trees. So our intention is to plant five additional shade trees along the, I guess would be the northern part of the upper, the northern part of the parking lot between Bun Drive and the parking lot and this island. So we'll go ahead and plant five trees there to provide, you know, additional shade and, you know, counteract the heat island effect in that area.
Okay, we really addressed the traffic patterns, which are essentially to stay the same, correct?
That is correct. The level of service is nominal, there's no change. You know, traffic circulation will remain as is. There'll be no change in level of service, you know, as a result of the increased enrollment.
And again, we're happy to provide the templates to show that the movements can be made.
Sure, we can provide those for the bus, service vehicles, absolutely.
Driveway behind the gym, we certainly touched on that. Intent is that it stays a relatively low-usage driveway?
That's correct. The intent there is to be used only for service vehicles and staff parking, which is, which is what's happening now, actually. It's an existing condition and will continue as such.
There was a comment concerning the fencing at the maintenance yard. What type of fence do you propose there?
The original suggestion was board-on-board, but we're amenable to making that a solid panel fence.
Okay, there's a comment about trees at the northern island. Can you address that?
That, I believe, is the additional five trees that we're going to park, I mean, install or plant along that parking lot.
There was a comment concerning the fencing at the basketball court?
Yes, we'll comply. We'll take another closer look at that and make that work.
Okay, we addressed the LED lights. Chairwoman, I think that concludes our testimony. We endeavored to go through each of the reports and cover most, not every point, but most of the points.
Right, you made a reference to phasing these various improvements.
Yes.
Are you going to discuss that at some point?
We can, if you'd like. We happen to have an exhibit.
You have an exhibit? And, you know, the problem with the last time was that we never got to the other phases. So I'd like to know when these things are going to happen.
Fair enough. Okay, we're up to A4.
Okay, A4 is called the alternate plan.
Okay, could you just call out the sheet number?
Sheet 101 is dated 5/21/2018.
We appreciate it was a little tight with the meeting, but we did submit this electronically a couple of days ago. So, Mr. Fick, if you could address this, some options that the school has to make sure it remains fiscally prudent?
Sure. Working with the architect, we, there are four areas that may need to be phased out because of financing, funding, things of that nature. And the important thing to remember here is that the detention base, the stormwater management design, the system will be installed, assuming that all of these alternates will be completed. Alternate number one is the kindergarten play area. Behind the K4 building, there's a playground area that we have there, some various playground equipment. That would be phase one, I'm sorry, alternate one. Alternate two is some paved area improvements, one of which is the bus drop-off area. There's some repaving, milling and repaving of new asphalt areas at the northern drive and as well as the drive off of Ewing Street. Then alternate three is some site amenities. We have two amphitheaters that we're utilizing some of the existing slopes on site to, and they actually worked out really well to place two amphitheaters. That is an alternate, as well as the split rail fence along the entire frontage of the property, actually along the parking lot, generally from the northern drive to the K4 building. There's the four-square areas. They are also part of that alternate.
Four squares, is it just a kid's game?
That's correct, yes. So, so some of those amenities. And then number four is a landscaping, enhanced landscaping. Our landscaping plan shows shrubs and ground cover in various areas. This does not include the rain garden plantings and the shade trees. Okay, they're going to be installed. It's these other areas where there's a high concentration of shrubs and ground cover. Our, the plan would be to replace that temporarily with some, with a seed mix, something that has fescues and bluegrass and those kinds of things temporarily. And then, you know, when funding is available, to go ahead and then plant the shrubs and the ground cover per the plan. That encompasses all four. Again, the stormwater management plan, it will be, remain unchanged with these alternates.
It's not clear to me whether these are actually alternates or just a list of things that may or may not get done.
Mr. Josephson can address it specifically. We are very hopeful, it's on the plans, but we wanted to inform the board that because of cost concerns, it's a complex project, bids have to come in. So we're hopeful. If the bids come in the right way, everything will be in. If interest rates come in the right way, we're hopeful to moving forward. But there are some elements that may have to come at a later time. Mr. Josephson can address this in more detail.
Okay, so all of these items are already on the plans? It's just a question of when and maybe if they'll be built, correct?
Yes, importantly, all the stormwater goes in up front. So there's no issue. We're trying to avoid what occurred back in 2007. And as Mr. Josephson said, trying to take everything into account. Stormwater goes in first, that deals with everything, that goes in. But there are additional amenities, like the amphitheater, like some enhanced landscaping, like some of the kids' courts, kindergarten area. Again, we're hopeful, but we want to let the board know that there is a chance, right from the start, that some things may not be able to go forward.
And as I understood Mr. Fick correctly, the stormwater management facilities will assume that all of these elements are going to be installed, correct?
That is correct, full build-out, mm-hmm.
Wait, so when you talk about phasing, I mean, the structure in the middle, will that be all at once? Or will that be phased in pieces?
You mean the detention basin?
No, no, I'm talking about the building.
Well, the, yeah, the building's going in.
Oh, so-
That's not phased, no.
Okay, so, but the phasing is-
Definitely the building is going in, yes.
Okay, but the landscaping features-
Yeah, some of the more amenities, the surface improvements, you know, a play area, the basketball court, you know, we may have to put that on hold for a little bit. But we know that's an impervious coverage issue. But the basins are going in, assuming it's been constructed.
But the stormwater is definitely the source of-
Absolutely, yeah.
Actually, while we're on the subject of amenities, do you mind explaining what a gaga pit is?
I have no idea.
You're deprived.
Does anybody know what a-
I know what a gaga pit is.
Can you enlighten us?
Gaga pit is this amazing device that kids love. It's very simple. It's about 10 feet round with a wall, sort of like a hockey rink wall. And the kids slap the ball and they hit each other and they love it. They can play for hours and hours when it's 100 degrees outside. They just go at it and they're sort of taking a kickball and slamming it against each other. And there's a wall and there's rules that you will never understand. But it's, it's, it's sort of the, if I could say, it's the opposite of the cell phone. Because the kids are interacting with rules and they figure it out and there's rule disputes and they just sort of work it out and there's a champion and then they all get back in the gaga pit like eight minutes later and then they're all out of the pit and-
All right, I'm going to have to Google this later.
That was one of my classes in law school. Expertise as a lawyer in gaga pit construction. And my kids happen to have gone to a overnight camp where they played a lot of gaga.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Almond?
Yes. I think you've done quite a good job of responding to the reasonability and master plan consistency-
We appreciate that.
And my colleagues may have caught some things that I didn't notice. I just wanted to double-check that I'm clear on the stormwater issue. I mean, that Mr. Scoopian's report of April 25. Did you meet with him after that and satisfy him about those issues?
Yes, and we had subsequent emails and phone conversations numerous times prior to the hearing, and we've addressed his comments.
Okay, well, I thank you for responding fully to Mr. Dobremilsky and the other issues regarding the environmental aspects of the building. Appreciate that.
Great.
Can I just ask, follow up on the stormwater thing? You put a certain amount of stormwater or detention facilities in for the trailers. There was some sort of a requirement that went when the trailers went in, is that right?
Yeah, it was, that was actually a bio-retention swale that we're actually going to utilize going forward.
You're going to keep that?
Yep, yes, there was a reason we did that because-
Even when the trailers go away?
When they go away, it's still going to be there, yeah.
Right, and I don't, I don't remember what the phase on that is, but they will go away when these buildings are constructed?
Yeah, the trailers will be removed, yes.
So I actually have a follow-up question about stormwater. So I'm not sure, was, did SBR review this? I don't know if the Environmental Commission reviewed it either. So, but, yeah, I feel like I would have remembered it. But, yeah, so I just wanted to ask you a little bit about how the stormwater management works and whether or not you guys have a stormwater management plan or mitigation plan, or have you done modeling in terms of how the stormwater management would work? I mean, I think that, so I think that what you are proposing is really fantastic and innovative. I mean, I love the rain gardens right in the middle of the campus. And I think that that really brings to light, you know, your stormwater and makes it kind of an educational tool. However, I have a little, I have some concerns about capacity. First of all, I mean, you're receiving all the water from the rest of the site into that, I guess, through pipes that will go under the new building and into the rain gardens. And I, I'm a little concerned in terms of the capacity of those pipes-
Well, it's, it's- Yeah, it's, I want to say it's, I'm just going to go back to exhibit A1 real quick. So the stormwater management plan has a variety of different drainage areas and different conveyances. One thing I want to bring out too is that the design we have in place meets the non-structural, non-structural point spreadsheet, which is, which is, used to be a requirement for NJDEP. But at Joe Scoopian's request, we did it and it showed that our non-structural methods are adequate, are above, above the minimum threshold. And we have about 30% of our conveyance is through swales. So we do need some underground pipes and things, but there's a variety of different drainage areas. So not everything is going through one or two pipes. We have, you know, an area here that's coming in through this direction. We have another one going through here. We have another one coming around here and everything. So it's spread out. So it's not like one area is getting all the water. We have four underground detention basins to take care of four different areas. And each one is designed such that it can hold the water, hold it, detain it, and then release it, you know, at a regulated rate. So the net result is that there's a net decrease in runoff from the site.
But were you able to model it for the 100-year storm?
Oh, yeah, we have a report that thick. Yeah, Joe Scoopian has reviewed it. He said we are, we meet the quantity, quantity requirement. So for volume and rate, so, you know, the, the design we have now complies with the ordinance in terms of quantity control. So, yeah, we're able to hold it and then release it. And also required to, not only do we have to detain it and release it, but we also have to reduce it as well. There's a reduction factor we have to add on top of that. So we're actually, we're releasing less now than we would under existing conditions back in 2008.
Less now, you're meaning less after it gets constructed?
Correct, yes, correct, yes.
That's great. And just one other question, with the parking area, I noticed that there's some porous pavement. But is that stormwater going into the site? Or is that going into the sewers?
That's actually, that actually acts as its own detention system.
Well, I'm talking about the whole terrace.
Oh, no, yeah, some of this, the stormwater collection system there is in place here. There is a, it's a complicated question, sorry. We are collecting all of the existing parking lots. Some of that runoff is not going into the detention basins because it's an existing condition. So what we've done is we've taken into account that runoff and compensated for it upstream. So we've held enough water back that if you add this and you add what's going here, you still have a net reduction. So we've designed it so that, you know, the runoff that's stored upstream is such that it's reduced enough that when it meets this parking lot, we still have a net reduction.
Okay, great. Please, did you have something to add? Okay.
And I want to go back to the sidewalk for a minute because it seems to me that not having a sidewalk along that whole stretch of Bun Drive is only going to put schoolkids onto the shoulder of the road and dashing across the road to get to the sidewalk on the other side. They're not going to go all the way to the end and then cross and then come back up again to walk home. And there's housing on both sides of Bun Drive further up, as well as all those office buildings, a lot of the medical office buildings at, you know, on the property right next door. So, I mean, unless there's some, some reason that I'm just totally not thinking about, I can't imagine that it's more safe to have no connectivity from the north side of the property for pedestrians and, you know, kids who are riding their bike to school on the pathway instead of on the shoulder of the road. So I-
Mr. Patton?
You know, just jump in.
You should, you should come up.
All right, just identify yourself so that the court reporter can get you.
You know, we are extremely vigilant about any students crossing. It is a big, bottom of a big downhill. And if you go up above on our side of the street, there's no sidewalk whatsoever. They are, you're sort of, if you put a sidewalk there, my sense of it is you'd be forcing them to cross in the worst possible- them to cross in the worst possible place. So we absolutely insist, and when we bring students up for practices, and I'll show you, we force them to go down and cross at that crosswalk on the lower side, so.
We have a sidewalk.
We have a sidewalk that runs here, if I'm getting myself oriented. So anybody walking south, they don't need to walk here because we have the pathway that brings them to this intersection and then they cross over. In this area here, there's no sidewalk and it's actually, there's kind of a drainage culvert on the next property and that's a very treacherous spot. So there's no gain in having a sidewalk here because there's nowhere to go. In fact, I think this is probably the worst place possible to cross because you have this entrance, our entrance, and the bottom of a hill and there's an entrance actually to the office park as well. So we are really strict about forcing all students to go this way. And if they're going up north, there is a sidewalk on our side right here that goes the entire way.
So Larry, you mentioned there's sort of an internal sidewalk there?
Uh, right here. This is a pathway.
People come in and then they're, they're always internal.
If you're coming up here, you enter the campus this way. You never go out to this, to this side, really. I mean, I guess you can, but...
I was not, I admit, was not aware that there was no sidewalk on that side of Bun Drive further up.
There's not up here, yeah, that's a problematic side, yeah.
Okay. The swale that is accepting, that's already built, that's taking water off of the...
Trailers?
Upper, off of the trailer and I guess really off of part of that unpaved area up to the driveway. When the, right now, there's a lot of standing water up there. And when the trailer is removed, are you gonna regrade or anything to make sure that the water does go either down onto the field or into the swale?
Right, it's probably due to construction and things, there's probably some, you know, running and collecting water, but the intent is, yes, to smooth this out, to leave it at existing grade, which everything does flow in this direction anyway. So there is the intent to smooth this out. And we also have an underdrain here behind the parking, the French drain here, behind the parking, between the, it's right off the edge of these spaces here. That collects into the French drain and discharges into our bio swell. So it helps, it helps, we want to keep that water off the field because it just gets wet too much. So we're gonna collect and put that right into, right into that bio retention swale that's there now, actually, and we're gonna enhance it. So it'll just, you know, collect there and, you know, go down into our, into our system.
Can you tell me a little bit about how you're designing those rain gardens? Are you working with a landscape architect on that? I noticed the swale that's there is definitely a workhorse. I mean, but it sort of looks like a workhorse, too. And if you, so I'm curious about the design of them, the specs, you know, all that detail that is, that's what makes a beautiful rain garden different from a vegetated swale.
Right, and, you know, it also, in my mind, is also like a bio infiltration basin, too, kind of thing. It's, so, but yes, a landscape architect has designed this. This is on our plans. They've selected all the species and all the plantings for that.
And will there be an engineer and landscape architect on site when the construction is happening?
I'm sure there will be. I'm sure to ensure that...
Can you commit to that? There's a lot of people who build them and don't know how and then the soil gets compacted and they don't work well and so being on site...
That is key, that the subsoil is...
If I may, Ms. Wilson, our planner who is here tonight to testify if necessary, I'm not sure that it is at this point, is Mike Sullivan, and he's been actively involved with the site with us for, gosh, I think going back close to four or five years when we first started talking about stormwater management on the site and how to make the site perform better. You have our commitment that Mr. Sullivan and his firm will be assisting us in the landscape architecture.
Including during construction?
Including during construction.
Can you talk a little bit about the porous pavement and why you chose to put it where it is? I've never seen it in a bus drive aisle. I've always seen it in, you know, on shoulders or parking spaces, but not a place where heavier vehicles are driving and making turning movements.
Right, it's, it was a location that we selected because it's on, essentially it's on the ridge line. So the runoff that's coming off the existing pass-through drive here just naturally falls in that area. So to us, it just felt like it would make sense just to, let's utilize that and, you know, let's not disturb other areas. Let's, we're, you know, we have to remove some of the curbing and push this back a little bit, so this is an area that we felt that would work within an area already disturbed. And, you know, again, it just seemed natural that all that, this runoff here will help, you know, will collect or be collected, you know, off that paved area here. And it just seemed like an adequate spot.
Well, if possible, you might put it, put a little bit more of it in the, in the parking spaces and you should definitely, maybe I'm not telling, telling you anything you don't already know, but you'll have to, probably have to use a different kind of mix if you're using it in a drive aisle where heavy vehicles are.
Stronger.
I know that it's been used in truck stops before, but not the same stuff that's used in parking spaces.
Understood, yeah. I mean, we're feasible when we, when we go through the next phase, you know, and working on the design, if it's feasible economically and then obviously environmentally and if it's, if it's a decision that, you know what, I think we could do better with stormwater management and may save us a little bit of money, maybe, maybe, maybe there's an idea that we can utilize this concept in another location, you know, maybe. But again, everything will be run through Joe Scoopian and the Princeton Engineering Department. But, you know, it may turn out that this, you know, when we look at this a little bit further and more detailed, maybe like, you know what, maybe this isn't the right thing to do. Maybe, maybe we want to use that porous pavement over here because it gives us a greater benefit. So that's something that we want to, you know, continue to, you know, just as we go through, finalize the design process, you know, we want to make this as, you know, as functional as possible.
Did you, if there are no more questions, it's near, what about, did your planner want to speak or...
We could, if you need him, we've really covered quite a bit of ground. I'm gonna instruct him to do the...
I think, I think we've covered almost every point.
We tried to be thorough. We tried to be thorough. Let me just say this, for the record, he's here to offer the formal opinion that the exemption is being exercised in a reasonable fashion. That's the exemption from site plan approval and that to the extent there's a Section 31 review that we're consistent, if the board or anybody else needs to hear from him, but we don't think we need him, given the breadth of the fact witness testimony.
Right. Okay, in that case, let me just...
We just had a question about the lights at night on the parking lot. Will they be turned off? Are they on timers or...
The intentions have timers, yes.
And I had a...
What time is it, like 10:11 or... It's late.
10:00, 10 o'clock is fine, yeah.
Thank you.
The question comes up every time the charter school comes up. Is it possible to put a little more landscaping between your property and is it Lot 3, Mr. Fox's property up at the corner? Is that sufficiently buffered now?
We believe it is, yes. I mean, we had, as a condition, I believe in 2007, there were plantings installed at that time. We believe there's ample landscaping now. I don't believe anybody at Lot 3...
You left out on our meeting on Monday morning.
True, right.
There's quite a bit of land.
And I don't believe the neighbor has had any other, you know...
Somehow, I've never been out there in the winter and it seems fine to me this week, but...
Right, right.
Ms. Gunning, if I can speak to that briefly. The Fox family, we consider them to be friends and neighbors. We watch out for them. I believe we did increase the landscaping in the past and certainly have worked to be good neighbors with them. And we've had no issues in recent years over that question. I know it's, we've had various conversations with family representatives and there's been no concerns.
Thank you. At some point, I think, no, I really would like to get to some of these people who've been sitting there very patiently and then we'll go back and a little more board discussion. But why don't I open this up to the public? If you would come forward to the microphone, give everybody about three minutes or so to speak to this, give your name.
Joe, I'm actually gonna swear you're in. If you could raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So stormwater firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Grace Roemer, R-O-E-M-E-R. And I live on Ewing Street. I've lived there for over 20 years, so just downhill from the charter school. I have two concerns for the planning board. The first is the stormwater management. It's been helpful to hear about all of this, but Ewing Street, the block of Ewing Street between Ewing and Harrison is already a very, very wet block. There's a lot of ponding after major storms and I wondered how far afield the modeling was. Was it just for the area immediately around the charter school or did it extend to the wider neighborhood? Because we already have a problem.
In terms of stormwater management, in terms of heading down Harrison towards Ewing, Ewing and Harrison, we're not increasing any runoff to that area. There's only one connection point that we have that crosses underneath the soccer field and we're reducing the runoff to that point. So we're not increasing any water there, so we're not gonna impact anything that's downstream of that point.
So it's actually coming off of that lower corner? So the wet area of Ewing and Harrison is off of the lower corner there?
Right.
So it's not off of the soccer field?
So everything, everything from this side, I guess, heading westbound, we're not reducing runoff into that direction.
Not reducing it?
No, we're reducing it.
You're reducing it, okay.
We're, we're not exceeding it or reducing it into that direction. Everything is contained within our basins here and discharging out into the sewer system in Bun Drive.
Okay, okay, thanks. My much bigger concern is the traffic and I thought that the testimony about that was completely inadequate. We have a big problem with the traffic right now on Ewing Street. So for many years, for the whole time that I've lived on Ewing Street, the traffic has been bad. The charter school added to the problem. The mitigation that the town put in between Ewing and Harrison helped a lot, but honestly, in the last year, it's gotten quite a bit worse. We have people parking on Ewing Street so they can walk over to the charter school. We have buses and cars speeding down in the morning around school drop-off time. So I didn't hear anything that sounded like a plan, let alone a mitigation for the current problem. So that is very disturbing as somebody who lives very close to the charter school. Chipping away at the problem is not a plan and it's not addressing the problem that exists right now. So...
I can address that, too, if you'd like. We certainly appreciate the concern. As you heard, 22 additional students are coming.
Yeah, you have to use the microphone.
Thank you. The 22 additional students are coming this fall and traffic was an issue that we addressed with a very complete report when we were here last summer. So...
A report is not actually real life, so it has gotten worse over the past year. People parking on Ewing Street to walk their kids over, speeding buses and speeding cars around the school drop-off time. So a report doesn't help.
We appreciate the concerns, but the traffic is not an issue that's in front of the board tonight, in our opinion. We appreciate it. Traffic is one of the conditional use standards and the board has held that we don't need conditional use approval, so. But putting all that aside, we had an expert spend thousands and thousands of dollars on a traffic study and had testimony when we were here for the trailers about 11 months ago.
But what is this school going to do to change families' behavior in terms of how they bring their children to and from the school? That's actually the problem, you know?
I think it's a fair, it's a fair concern. It's important to us to be good neighbors. It's A, hard for me to, it's certainly news to me to hear that you've got buses speeding through your neighborhood. Those buses, of course, are controlled by Princeton Public Schools. So if there's a concern with how they are driving, certainly, I think that's something that we can have a conversation with Princeton Transportation on that. We have in the past, one of the reasons why we have strongly discouraged our families from using the entrance on Bun Drive, excuse me, from Ewing to come into and leave the school, that is certainly something that we can work on enhancing our messaging and, you know, if necessary. Larry, do you have further thoughts on that you'd like to offer?
Yeah, I do, without a doubt. So we regularly speak to our parents and if parents are parking on those streets, I will redouble those, you know, sort of messages about not doing that. We've come to an agreement with Church and Dwight and we've spoken with them about using their parking lot as overflow, only for our specific events, but certainly during regular drop-off and pickup, the behavior needs, we will reinforce that. The speeding buses are not the buses that are going to our school. Our buses drop off at exactly 7:30 a.m. There's no queuing at that point. It's buses that are going past while there's a little bit of a backup, you know, at, really at a 7:50 in the, in the morning is about a four-minute spot there where it gets a little bit backed up. We are hoping that by getting more students to ride the bus, that will improve. I think that the changing parent behavior is certainly a big piece of the parking out on, on the Ewing or on Harrison if they are doing that. So we will continue to message and work with that, yeah.
And the buses are coming away. It's after drop-off, it's the empty buses that are speeding away.
The, at 7...
At 7:40, so it's not...
Yeah, okay, we can talk to them about that, absolutely. And we, and we regularly communicate and when we do have buses that are not ours that are sort of speeding up there, we will definitely work with them about that, yeah. We are currently, just to let you know, Princeton Public School contracts out with Rick Bus and other bus providers. Next year, we will be using Princeton Public School buses, not the other providers. So I think we're gonna get an added control and working with Donna on that, on those kinds of issues. They are very good about communicating with the providers that have bid the contracts for the routes, but next year, in my discussion with Donna Braden, we're going to use the actual Princeton-owned buses, not the routes that they have subcontracted. So hopefully that will be helpful, but I can communicate that.
It's something you really need to protect continuously because it's always a problem. You know, there's, people should not be driving to Ewing to get to the charter school. Like, they're coming home today.
And I discourage that constantly, but it's a constant...
Keep it up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do, I do, yes. My name is Mary Clerman.
I'm sorry, if you could state your full name and spell your last name, please.
Mary Clerman, C-L-U-R-M-A-N. I have two questions. One about the play equipment and I'm just wondering whether your play equipment is going to be conventional or interesting stuff because I think that what you put out there for the public to see advertises what, the kind of education that you provide. And the other question is, has to do with the crosswalk. I see some green area there in front of the parking area and I wonder if you can create an impenetrable area so that kids don't run across the street above Church and Dwight? And I don't understand exactly where it is that the kids will go into the school. So are they required, are they required to go, to enter from this lower corner? Is that how it works? They have to go in that way?
Question first, is that okay?
Sure.
Sure, sure. There's a, you know, as we stated, we, there's a walkway along Ewing and a crosswalk coming across this light, traffic light here coming across Bun Drive and the kids come through this direction and then along the parking lot and into the school.
Okay, so if they're coming from the other direction, is there anything to keep them from crossing the street and going through? In other words, I know that when I go to the... In other words, I know that when I go to the doctor's offices in the jungle up there, they have this impenetrable brambles in the woods, and you really, I've tried to go through, and you really practically can't. And I'm just wondering whether it's possible to establish something that's kind of impenetrable that doesn't tempt kids to run across and go through, and it should be very simple as far as planting is concerned.
I don't think we have anything proposed at this time. I think a testimony previously by Mr. Patton was that, you know, they discourage kids from crossing.
I understand that. I think that's great that they teach the kids to do that, and they teach the parents that that's important. I think that's a very important factor, but I would suggest that you consider impenetrability in the planting.
Okay, we'll consider it, sure.
Thank you.
And the selection of the playground equipment?
Yeah.
We're going to stay in that.
We are looking at playground equipment that has like a nature theme, so if we can get equipment that maybe looks like wood, it might be plastic, but has like a wood look to it, and probably like green, and, you know, incorporate like green aspects into the equipment as well.
Okay, that's nice. It's kind of like the Barbara Boggs Park.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's very conventional at this point. It's very nice, and it's certainly more natural than, I think, what's going to go into the Mary Moss Park, which I think is the green and yellow and red stuff that we all see everywhere.
We're not doing primary colors.
Good. But I just want to say that Mercer County Park has a thing that they refer to as a spiderweb, which is a cable climbing thing, and it looks kind of like an Eiffel Tower, but it's all cables, and you, and depending on the weight on it, it's very difficult and challenging, and that's kind of interesting. And then my grandkids went to the Wheeler School in Providence, Rhode Island, and they had a variety of climbing things that were really interesting. I just think that it's something you should look at and consider, not just the natural theme, but also the interest and the variety and the intellectual stimulation of a different kind of equipment. Thank you.
Do you have some specific suggestions?
I know what she's talking about. I know the spiderweb product. Yeah, there's some great stuff out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All of you have, there we go.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, yes, I do.
So sworn or affirm, please.
First name Shenwei, last name Zhao, Z-H-A-O. I do have a question. I'm a Charter School parent. I know the, this is actually for the architect, do you have any, in this day and age, do you have anything in mind in terms of the security for the school? I know you mentioned about it's a very generic school design, but in this day and age, do you have anything in mind in terms of how do you secure the entrance? And how do you, in emergency situation, do you have any evacuation route in mind in those type of design?
Well, just, we follow, you know, the protocols for drilling and practicing for security, lockdowns in those situations. We have an evacuation plan where we, actually, we train, we drill this with students, where we cross Bun Drive, go up, and we use Church and Dwight as a facility, so if we do have to get off campus, we go there. We do feel that by being able to funnel people to, show really two main entrances and having a more secure kind of building, we are more secure. We've taken the steps over the last couple of years to lock our doors. When we didn't, we've installed key fobs so that we're more likely to keep them locked because of ease of entry when teachers are coming in and out. No one's propping up doors, which is one of the big problems for security. And, you know, as we always will, we continue to have fire drills where we exit the building quickly. We're required to do those once a month, and, you know, we'll comply with that. There are exit ways that are built into the new design so that we'll be able to do that. But we do feel that we are more secure by having a little bit more of an enclosed space because there's a lot of traffic between the buildings at non-break times. And then we're also continuing to look at ways with the new building of having some technology support us in terms of our ability to sound an alert from any place in the school. I know that next year, I propose to the board that we're going to use something called Alert 911, which is a mobile-based, computer-based alert system to initiate drills or emergency responses. So those are things that we're obviously thinking a lot about in this, in this time as we have in the past, but we're wrestling with.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, let me close the public portion, and any more board questions now that you've had a chance to hear the public? Anyone?
I had one more. And I'm pretty sure it is the only one.
Okay.
But the, and Mr. Dobromilsky made mention of this in his memo, there is a big tree, pretty big tree, that under the plan will be lost, that's at the end of the, near the end of the driveway onto Ewing Street. So I was wondering if it really is necessary to lose that tree, and if you could speak to that.
The, yeah, the tree in question is actually right near this, right near the driveway on this corner right here. I actually drove by it on the way home, I'm sorry, on the way here. You know, honestly, the problem with keeping is that this is going to become one of our construction access points here to get into the site. There's really no other way to get there. So our feeling is that, you know, once construction is complete, we'll replace two trees in that area and put it along the driveway there as a replacement option.
Actually, that does remind me of, I think that another point in, in the memo was that there's an overall loss of 12 trees and adding 11 back. Is that, is that number correct?
That's...
Sort of like that. Seems like going in the wrong direction. Is that...
That doesn't include the five additional trees they talked about tonight.
Along...
Along the parking lot.
So now they'd be adding more than they're removing.
Okay.
And we would add, we would place the one that we would remove at that corner there.
With two...
Two.
Of what? Two...
Two and a half, three-inch caliper.
Something like that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And with the guidance of your landscape architect about healthy native species, et cetera?
Sure, we'll kind of list and work with them, yeah, select the right one.
Okay, so the, so the net loss and, or the net gain is how many now with the additional five? And those two?
Six. It'd be adding six additional trees.
Six, right.
The net would be plus six, I believe.
Mm-hmm, that sounds right, yep.
So minus 12 plus 18.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? I just, I never can resist saying these things, but the Leveque House. Leveque House is, in fact, a registered, listed historic site. It's on various survey forms and so on. And one of the sheets that was turned in said that this campus had no historic sites. The Leveque House is really something worth paying attention to and keeping up, and I know it looks very, very, very well right now, so I just wanted to correct that, that Are there any other points that we should cover? I think that Dan's memo covered a great many things.
Could I just ask all professionals whether you're satisfied with the testimony? Whether there's any, you have any additional questions or comments?
I don't have any other comments. I think David attempted to address all the pertinent issues.
I think the only thing that I'm still concerned about that service area, the fact that that's the main entrance at this point, and they talked about fencing, et cetera. I think what I was, did mention was gating, which probably isn't going to be practical, I would assume, but trying to pinch down the access point to try and really de-emphasize that part of that entrance, I think is important. I think it's very visible right now, and anything we can do to try and control it and make sure it doesn't grow, you know, uncontrolled, I think would be important.
We would commit to take another look at that issue and the design details, and we'd appreciate your suggestions on that, so.
Anything else? Dana, anything about the busing or anything? No? Anyone?
So I guess this is just more like a formality, but I was wondering if it'd be possible for the applicant to submit the green building checklist with their final application, because I think that that's something that, you know, at least the Environmental Commission is looking to, you know, spearhead and kind of make common practice, because we would like to have, you know, all major developments kind of built to a LEED standard. We understand that the LEED process is expensive, but at least, you know, we want to know, you know, where these buildings stand as far as LEED. So, you know, I think there was mention that that was filled out, so it would be great if the applicant could...
We understand the recommendation. We'll endeavor to get you some information on that point.
Now, by that, do you mean you'll like, you'll use a checklist and fill it out?
Well, I don't know what that, yes? Oh, yes? Okay.
Okay. I assume that Mr. Mueller has a very long list of all the things that have been agreed to, as is Mr. Spelnick, but...
That's so funny, my list is very short.
Yeah, well, maybe you...
Would you like me to go over it?
Yes, would you?
Okay. I mean, there's really actually two things. This really is a hybrid hearing, because it is a reasonableness review and courtesy review on the one hand. It's really a hybrid hearing, because it's a courtesy review and reasonableness review in part, and in part it dealt with fulfilling the condition dealing with stormwater management, which came out of a formal site plan hearing. With respect to stormwater management, I'm going to articulate the condition. Everything else will really be recommendations from the board, but I will note in the resolution that they've been all been agreed to by the applicant. But since it is, that portion is just courtesy and reasonableness, we cannot impose conditions, because that's not the nature of the, of the hearing before us. But let me go over what I believe to be agreed to. Okay, you provide the turning templates. We'll have fence and vegetation around the maintenance yard. We'll eliminate the two-foot footings. Is that just in the, all of them, Dana, or just in a certain area?
For the lights.
For the lights, okay. We'll repair the asphalt path on Ewing. We'll put in a crosswalk at the, on the, at the Ewing Street driveway.
Is that, sorry, Ewing Street?
Yeah, we'll repair the asphalt path on Ewing. We'll install a crosswalk at the Ewing Street driveway, and anybody jump in if I have this wrong. Add five additional shade trees between Bun Drive and the parking lot. Solid fence around the maintenance yard, the basketball court fence. You'll address Dan Dobromilsky's comment about that, whether there have to be some modifications. The one condition is that the stormwater management facilities will be built up front, and as per the agreement with Joe Scupian and the engineering department, which may be modified from time to time. We don't actually have the details on that. And that in the stormwater management facilities will assume that all of the, what we call the alternates, that is, the possibly phased elements, will be assumed to be installed. Then the parking lot lights will be on timers, and the lights will be turned off at 10:00 The school will work on messaging with the parents discouraging entry on Ewing and parking on Ewing. Also, the school will talk to the bus company about buses not speeding away after dropping children off. We'll reconsider impenetrable vegetation along Bun Drive to discourage students from crossing Bun at other than the intersection. Once construction completed, we'll replace the lost tree at the Ewing construction entrance with two trees. We'll consider pinching down and de-emphasizing the service access point, and we'll submit the green practices checklist.
And signage?
What do we have to do? I don't know that we need to do anything on signage, because my understanding is the signage is already on the plans? Is that not correct?
The architect has indicated that the signage is already on the plans.
Okay. Okay, anybody, anything else? I think that's probably...
So just to clarify, there is a stormwater management maintenance plan as part of the final package? That's included?
I read just tonight, at minimum, the DRCC has required the plan, so we'll be preparing a plan.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Jerry, would there be any recommendations regarding the solar battery backup generator discussion, or did that lead anywhere other than just discussion?
Well, certainly, we could add that if it's a pleasure of the board.
I think they testified that they were planning to do the battery backup and had no plan to install a generator.
And that the, the battery backup was relatively short-term, I gather.
Right, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to add that as a suggestion, or if it's, you're just, if it needed to be in there or not.
I just want to install battery backup?
No, no.
Oh, you want? Oh, the board...
I think what they said, they were exploring, they were proposing solar PV on the roof with the potential for battery backup to create some, I mean, depending on how you design that, that can provide to some level an islanding possibility that's beneficial, similar to a generator. So I don't know that they can do that, but that's what, that would be the ultimate goal of the batteries.
That would be in public interest?
Yes. We appreciate the suggestion, as we said. It can't be a commitment because of the expense, and I think the board understands. We have taken all the comments seriously and worked with you. Some flexibility has to be made, because there's educational trade-offs and different things. So I'm confident you feel we've engaged in the process in good faith, and we'll continue to do that concerning the backup, and we hear the comments. So we can't make that commitment at this time.
So the end result, what is this called? A report or a...
Well, it'll be a resolution, and I'll just go briefly, it won't be as lengthy as they usually are, go briefly through the facts and just lay out the conditions with respect to stormwater management, because they are conditions, and then lay out all of the recommendations, all of which have been agreed to by the applicant.
Okay. And as a resolution, I think we need someone to move it.
Absolutely.
Would someone like to move this resolution?
Gail Alman, I will, I will move the approval of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Want to call the role on that, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time, and again, we appreciate the special hearing right before a holiday weekend. Thank you.
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All that's to say, move adjourned.
Aye.